You're right there doing it, Andy.
We're here in the mic.
Open up the meeting. Yeah. We're opening up the meeting for City Council and Planning Commission Joint Workshop. Who's up first?
You open the meeting, okay. So, good evening, Council and Planning Commission. It's great to see a full dais up here and everyone getting along. Jalen French, Development Community Services Manager. I will do a brief lead-in and then turn it over to our esteemed consultants who are here in person today, joining us in the rain. So, this is our second workshop, joint workshop with the Planning Commission and the Council. It's important for us to share this with you as it's happening, you know, sort of in real time. We're on a very quick process to update our Housing Element, which is a state-required element of the general plan. So, it is required to be updated every eight years. And there is a special State Department, HCD, which reviews these documents. State housing law has increased in intensity over the last several years, and the state is looking very much more closely at these documents. Again, we, I feel, we are in very good hands with Foreleaf, who has done a number of these housing elements for many cities throughout the state and has done a number of six-cycle, this is the latest version, done a number of six-cycle housing elements. So, we're here before you today, again, this is the second workshop. First workshop was really to get the public involved a little bit and to start to give you what the framework of the plan was going to look like. Today, we're getting a little more detailed. We have a few programs and some sites that we'll be sharing with you. These sites will be familiar to most of you who have seen previous iterations of the Housing Element. No, not too many surprises. But we do need to show how we can accommodate the state-provided number of housing units that we must accommodate, which is called the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment or Allocation Number. So, we'll be walking through kind of the programs that will help us address the state housing law and the sites that will help us accommodate our RENA. So, that's the purpose of today's meeting. Ultimately, we will have a draft of the document that staff will review first, of course, and then it'll hit the streets for a 30-day public review period. After that, we will take all the comments that we receive, finalize the document, and submit it to the state. Our goal is to submit that version of the plan to the state prior to the statutory deadline, December 31st of this year. There is then a 120-day grace period, which the state doesn't like that term, but it is essentially a grace period in which we hope to have the document reviewed by HCD back to us and then adopted before both of your bodies independently, hopefully, prior to April 30th. That will, of course, depend on how long HCD takes to review the document and what issues they may have with some of the policies that we recommend. But that is the goal, that is the outline, that is the next steps of this effort. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Luke and Marcella to walk us through this workshop.
Not as tall as Jalen, so go ahead and lower that a little bit. Thank you all, my name is Maricela Martinez, and I am a Senior Planner at Foreleaf, here with my colleague Luke Lindenbusch. He'll be up here in just a little bit. But before we begin, we can pull up the PowerPoint. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about what we're going to be covering this evening. We did send out a community engagement survey, so a community survey to residents through a utility mailer, as well as posting flyers in various locations and via email. So, we'll be covering that first. We'll then talk about affirmatively furthering fair housing, because we love terms that are super-long sometimes. We call it AFFH, because that's a mouthful. We'll then talk about sites, as Jalen mentioned, and then move into the programs before we begin our discussion. Let's overview. To date, we've received 160 survey responses, and these survey responses have helped us shape the Housing Element so that it's reflective of the current and future housing needs in Escalon. So, just to kind of walk you through what questions were asked. Question one asked what the biggest housing needs today in Escalon were. As you'll see on the screen, I've highlighted the top three responses. They're all pretty close. The top need indicated as a need today is need more housing for seniors, followed by need homes that are affordable to first-time homebuyers, and then finally, just overall need housing that is in a lower price range. We then asked community members to indicate what the housing needs in the coming 10 years would be. As you know, this is a forward-looking document. The planning period is eight years. But looking forward, what do you believe the largest housing needs are? And as you'll see highlighted before you, it's pretty reflective of the responses from the first question. The number-one response related to senior housing, "Our aging population will need accessible, well-designed housing options", followed by "housing so that younger Escalon residents can afford to live here", and finally, "a need for rehab", so older homes will be deteriorating and in need of repair. We then asked residents to rank their level of agreement with, as you'll see, quite a few statements. And to save you the headache of trying to read that, we'll go ahead and just highlight the top three, as we have been doing. The number-one indication was that it's important to preserve Escalon neighborhoods. The following indicated that a lot of folks agreed with the statement, "My housing costs have increased in the last five years", and finally, very much they're like the first two questions, "Some seniors need assistance to remain in their homes", so we did see a large emphasis on the need for senior housing, as well as the housing where folks can continue to age in place. The next two questions were very forward-thinking, solutions-oriented. The fourth question asked respondents to indicate what types of new housing they felt would be successful in Escalon today, as I mentioned, so that it's reflective of Escalon's needs. And so, as you'll see on the next screen, again, very similar to the first couple of questions, independent senior housing was the top respondent, response amongst the others, followed by missing middle housing, which is a common term in the planning world. But for those who aren't familiar with it, it's typically things like townhomes, triplex, fourplex, duplex, in-between multifamily and single-family. And then finally, accessory dwelling units, which are more commonly known as mother-in-law suites or granny flats, or sometimes just a backyard unit. And finally, the fifth question was completely open-ended. We asked residents, "What are some unique features of Escalon specifically that can be housing opportunities for the community?" And for this question, the number-one open response, we put them into categories, was that there was a desire and an opportunity for more units in general. There wasn't necessarily a specification given on the exact type of units. It was just mentioned that there's an opportunity for housing in general, followed by folks who did specify that they felt that the biggest opportunity is for smaller units, as I mentioned earlier, such as accessory dwelling units, tiny homes, duplexes, kind of that smaller-intensity sort of development. 10 folks did indicate that they desire no change at all, followed by the desire to just overall preserve the small-town feel, that we really have an opportunity to plan for housing in a way that preserves the feel of Escalon. And then, followed by that, there were some additional comments that just overall wanted more, again, specific units. Some specified single-family, some specified multifamily. And then others responded in a way that wasn't necessarily related to housing specifically, the type of housing units. They expressed overall that they'd like more businesses to be attracted to Escalon, less drive-throughs, for example. And some others miscellaneous who indicated that they just like overall more public investment in infrastructure and public amenities. So, that's really what the responses showed. Very strong support for senior housing, accessory dwelling units, missing middle housing, like I said, duplex, triplex, that sort of development. But overall, through the open-ended responses, there was an indication for a need for additional units. A lot of them expressing just the need for their children to be able to continue to live in Escalon and afford to have their own families here, things of that nature. So, overall, did indicate that more units in general are a need and an opportunity here in Escalon. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass it off to Luke. He'll be going over the long term, but I'll keep it short, AFFH.
Great, thank you, Maricela, and good evening, Councilmembers, Commissioners. Good to see you all again this evening. So, we went over in the kickoff workshop, affirmatively furthering fair housing, also known as AFFH, but just want to go a little bit into how this is impacting our next stage of this process. So, you'll recognize this slide from last time, really looking at some of the requirements of affirmatively furthering fair housing, primarily that it's part of a broader effort within Housing Element Law, that the Housing Element has to reach out to a variety of all economic segments of the current community, of both current and future residents as part of the Housing Element planning process. So, really, where the rubber meets the road with that is the presentation that we have tonight. Looking at sites and how they must be distributed throughout resource areas, we'll be going in the next couple of slides into the resource areas that are distributed throughout Escalon, and some of the changes from the 2023 to 2024 maps that have impacted our analysis. In addition, looking at programs, this is something that is considered throughout the document, making sure that there isn't anything that negatively impacts communities within Escalon that perpetuates patterns of segregation, and rather, that programs, goals, policies, and programs can perpetuate or can integrate the city to the best effect possible. In addition, the outreach component, as I mentioned, making sure that there's that diligent effort to reach all residents. We went over what's been done so far in terms of community engagement, in terms of the survey, but we'll be going throughout the presentation in terms of some of the stakeholder outreach, in addition to some of the upcoming outreach that's going to be planned as we move toward the public review draft Housing Element. And in addition, the analysis has to really assess the existing local and regional conditions. This will be detailed throughout the technical background report of the Housing Element, looking at needs, resources, and constraints to housing, in addition to the standalone Section 5, which is the fair housing analysis. So, just to give a preview of some of the things that you'll be seeing in the document as it goes to the public in the next month or two. So, this, again, is a slide from last time. Escalon circled there, showing that Escalon previously was designated as 100% high-resource areas, and that has changed in this upcoming map, which HCD is likely to have us look at in terms of doing our site analysis when they're reviewing the Housing Element. This wasn't because of a huge change in numbers. It's really all still based off of the 2020 census. But it was basically based on a difference in methodology, where there was a different way that they were reaching the thresholds. Instead of having it on a point scale out of 100 for the environmental, economic, and educational factors, they basically had nine different categories, and depending on how many benchmarks you had on a regional basis throughout the county, that determined whether you were a high-resource or a lower-resource area. So, you see that there's still no low-resource or high-segregation and poverty areas in comparison to the remainder of San Joaquin and Steonosloah Counties. However, some of the block groups within the city are now a combination of mostly high-resource, which you see in the northwest and the southeast, highest resource, which you see in the southwest, and moderate resource, which you see in the northeast. So, really, for a town as small as Escalon, just to distill this down a little bit, what it really means is that you can't put all of the sites in the moderate resource area, right? That's what HCD doesn't want to see, is a concentration of all of your affordable housing in your lowest-resource census tract or block group. So, really, making sure that the sites are distributed is the key factor that we're looking at now. And as you go into looking at the draft Housing Element in the next couple of months, you'll really see most of the programs, including ones to affirmatively furthering fair housing, are citywide. We know that, you know, there's not really a huge difference between a lot of these census tracts and a town that's really small, one that has boundaries that go beyond the city limits. So, just wanted to give this high-level overview of this change, considering that's something that changed since last time, and go a little bit into how this impacts some of the sites. So, I'll invite Maricela back up to go over the regional housing needs allocation and where the site's inventory is currently at.
Thanks, Luke. I'm the numbers gal, so I'm going to come at you with some more numbers this evening. Jalen mentioned earlier, RENA is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. This was brought up last time. The RENA for Escalon is 367. But as you'll see, we're needing to add on a 30% buffer, and that's just to ensure that you're able to maintain your site's inventory across all the various income levels throughout the planning period, so that as applications come before you, you're not having to go back and go through this process all over again, trying to find other sites if the site isn't being developed in the way that the Housing Element anticipated or at the affordability level that was anticipated in the Housing Element. And so, that brings the RENA with a 30% buffer up to 475. And so, there's a variety of ways that you can fulfill your RENA requirements. Two of them are commonly referred to as RENA credits. And so, the two that are referred to as RENA credits are planned and approved projects that are currently in the pipeline. And then there are accessory dwelling unit projections, and that projection is based on the number of permits for accessory dwelling units that have been issued since 2018. And then you do the average, you do the math over the next eight years, and there is your projection. So, when we took into account the RENA credits, there's still a shortfall of 344 sites, or units, I should say, for Escalon. And so, the next step is to do the site's inventory, assess development capacity across sites that are adequately zoned. Luke mentioned a little bit earlier the need to distribute sites across the various income categories or resource categories. As you'll see in the map that's before you on your screen, these are distributed across mainly high-resource, some in the lower area of your screen and moderate, but there isn't a concentration in just one. And so, when we then look at development capacity, we look at them through the lens of vacant or non-vacant and underutilized. And so, for these vacant sites that you see on your screen, there are a total of nine. These should look a little bit familiar to you if you've gone through this process before. These sites have been included in about two or more sites' inventories in the past. And in moving forward, that just means that there'll have to be certain provisions for these sites to continue to be included, since they have been included in the past two or three. But these should all look familiar to you, as I mentioned, as they've been in the previous inventories. And for the realistic capacity, that's using the minimum densities that are allowed in your various zoning districts. So, looking at the vacant sites, there's realistic capacity for about 85 units. If you remember before, there's a shortfall of 344. So, that leaves us to look at additional sites to accommodate for that shortfall. So, we then looked at non-vacant. Three of the four sites before you have not been included in previous Housing Element inventories. These are newer. You'll see that there's a little cross. That's an indication that it's a church that's located on that site. And the reason why we looked at those sites is because a recent state law was passed. It's called Senate Bill 4, and it allows for churches or religious institutions to develop housing on their properties. That was recently passed. And so, when we look at the capacity for those non-vacant sites, and there's a realistic capacity of 316 units. So, using non-vacant and vacant sites, there's a realistic capacity of 401 units, which is enough to cover that shortfall that we saw a little bit earlier. In terms of moving forward, with how we go about facilitating housing production, there's the goals, policies, and programs, which Luke will be going over next.
Thank you, Maricela. So, one point I just want to bring up before going into the goals, policies, and programs is one that will be resonant from the sites going into this portion, that this is really an update to your Housing Element. There's a lot of good work that was done in the prior cycle, so a lot of it can be carried over. And really, the first thing that we looked at in terms of forming the basis for the new goals, policies, and programs in this Housing Element were the previous ones as the basis. So, first, just want to go into the Housing Element goals. Most of these are really carried over. Some of them have just been shortened in terms of the wording, just to make it fit on one screen and to make it a little bit more palatable to the public. But really, there were six goals that were included in the fifth-cycle Housing Element, and now we've pared it down to five, because one of them just had two programs under it, and so it was folded in. But goal number one, that's continuing, provide viable sites for housing. It was previously titled, "Provide Adequate Sites for Housing", but just changed that word to viable, considering many of the program actions are really making sure that those reuse sites are going to be viable within the next eight-year planning cycle. Goal number two, to facilitate housing development, is another one that's continuing, really based on production as its primary focus there. Goal number three, looks at sustaining Escalon's housing neighborhoods. This was the preservation program that was included in the prior Housing Element and also folds in the environmental sustainability goal as well as part of that, since many of the environmental sustainability programs that are included in Housing Elements really have to do with rehabilitation, weatherization, helping make sure that the existing housing stock that's less energy-efficient can be more energy-efficient moving into the future. Next, we have supporting affordable and accessible housing. This is another continuing program, continuing goal, rather. And this was the one that was really just truncated. It listed a number of special needs groups that are required to be considered within the Housing Element, a number of different housing types. And we figured it mostly just had to do with supporting affordability and accessibility of housing in Escalon, so changed the title just to shorten it a little bit there, but it's the same goal. And goal number five, this is the one that continued verbatim over, eliminate housing discrimination. And this includes a number of programs to affirmatively further fair housing in response to both local priorities and state laws. So, going into the programs under each of the goals, this one, first program, maintain housing capacity. That has to do with making sure that those reuse sites can be eligible and viable for development in the eight-year planning cycle. Encouraging mixed-use and residential development in commercial areas. A little bit of a hybrid approach is another continuing program that has to do with making sure that commercial sites, especially the ones that are included in the Housing Element site's inventory, are viable for development and that they're supported. Also has to do with folding in some of the state requirements for housing on commercial lands, mixed-use, things of that nature. Program 1-3, accessible and transparent development information. This really has to do with making sure that the city over the eight-year planning cycle can respond to the variety of state laws that have required transparency, making sure that impact fees are posted on the city's website in accordance with state law, and making it easy for developers to be able to access the information that they need to be able to file applications. Goal number two, this was the goal, facilitate housing development. This is all of the production programs. So, program 2-1, zoning for a variety of housing types. This is another continuing program renamed. This really includes a wide variety laundry list of all of the different code changes that need to be made for the city to remain in compliance with state law. So, these are ones that, some of them have to do with supporting sites, some of them have to do with just responding to the number of state laws that have passed within the last five years. And then, programs 2-2 through 2-6 really have to do with the priorities that were identified by stakeholders, by the community so far in surveys that have been done in terms of the housing needs that can be supported best in Escalon. Number one, there being senior housing, in accordance with it being the number-one priority emerging from the community survey. Missing middle housing, looking again at those townhomes, triplexes, different policy options that will be able to be brought to the commission and council at a later date for consideration. In addition, programs to support recent changes in state law around accessory dwelling units, providing funding and incentives to affordable housing developers, again, to ensure that those sites are viable. And finally, farmworker housing, given the fact that Escalon is in predominantly agricultural area, and there's a number of laws that have passed in recent years surrounding farmworker housing, some of which are required under state law and some of which are opt-in. So, they provide different provisions that make facilitating farmworker housing easier. And those, again, would be an action that would come back to the commission and council at a later date. So, a lot of them are policy options, really not setting things in stone as much as possible here, but providing a path forward that the city can take to amplify any of these options over the course of the planning period in the next eight years. Looking at goal number three, sustain Escalon's housing and neighborhoods. Again, this was the one that had the preservation programs in it, neighborhood improvement. That first one really is the capital improvement program. Looking every five years when the city updates its capital improvement plan, how that connects with the housing piece. How are neighborhoods supported when new housing is built? How are neighborhoods with those older homes that may be deteriorating and need of repair that were identified by the community? How will they need different infrastructural support over the next eight years? So, those are covered under neighborhood improvements, another continuing program. Housing rehabilitation program supports that, just more specifically looking at a unit-by-unit rehabilitation support. Conservation of affordable units. This has to do with looking at expiration of deed restrictions for affordable housing over the planning period, making sure that property owners, residents are aware in the event that any of those units expire and people are at jeopardy of losing their homes. Program 3-4, this is the one that was carried over from the goal that was eliminated, because it only had one program, really looking at energy conservation and efficiency and measures that the city can take to take advantage of state, regional programs to support residents in making their homes more cost-effective, more, and by conserving more energy. Next, looking at the programs under goal number four, to support affordable and accessible housing. These are all continuing programs as well. The removal of constraints, looking at what's identified in the constraints chapter of the technical background report, that'll be part of the full Housing Element in response to development stakeholder feedback on constraints as they exist in Escalon. In addition, special needs housing. There were the special needs groups that were identified in earlier programs as highlighted as a priority of the community, primarily seniors, which are a special needs group, as defined by Housing Element Law, but also a program in here to continue to look at the needs of a variety of groups in Escalon over the course of the planning period and ensure that those needs are met. Housing stakeholder engagement, this is another continuing program renamed, really to make sure that service providers, housing developers, can be supported over the course of the planning period as they sustain and develop new projects within the city of Escalon. And finally, another continuing program here, parking reductions for eligible products, projects, really looking at parking requirements. There are some state mandates in terms of parking that will be folded into this program. Those are going to be pretty cut and dry, but really just continuing over additional ones about making sure that mixed-use can be supported. That was really the flavor of the program in the fifth cycle, and looking at ways that parking can be considered by the commission and council over the planning period. And finally, going into goal number five, final goal, and the programs contained therein, eliminate housing discrimination. This is really all the affirmatively furthering fair housing or AFFH program, so some of these are new. The ones that are continuing are 5-1, 5-2, and 5-4, really looking at equal housing opportunity, a number of subprograms in there to help ensure that the information that the city's providing can create conditions for fair housing, ensuring that grievances can be sought and dealt with in a manner that is in compliance with local, state, and federal law. In addition, removal of impediments to fair housing, sort of continuing with those same actions, making sure just ultimately that the city's housing administration is keeping up to date with the requirements of AB 686 and other fair housing state law. The rest of them, with the exception, I'll go into housing choice vouchers, 5-4 next. This is really to publicize any openings to San Joaquin County Housing Authority, the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher waiting list to ensure that low-income residents can be aware of that opportunity as it presents itself. 5-3, 5-5, and 5-6, again, are the new ones. 5-3, really looking at anti-displacement actions. This is one that comes up a lot with HCD. This is one that comes up a lot with HCD. There's a number of different actions that we can take and that we can look at throughout the course of the housing element period, so this one might be a little bit in flux. But this is really looking at making sure that people who live in Escalon aren't displaced, given the response in the survey, looking at seniors. This is probably going to focus on seniors in large part, making sure that as many actions as the city can possibly take to keep people in their homes are sought. In addition, reasonable accommodation, this one also really affects seniors and people with disabilities, ensuring that if there's a request for reasonable accommodation, that it goes through quickly, that there's a process for it, and that it's low barrier for anyone who's seeking it. That's typically something like a ramp for someone who, you know, can't access their home, for example. So that's the reasonable accommodation program. And finally, the last program, limit code enforcement activities. This one really looks at making sure that code enforcement can be in accordance with affirmatively furthering fair housing by limiting code enforcement cases to those that have to do with health and safety. So this can look at ensuring that there's culturally competent responses to different cases that are called to code enforcement. This can also look at accessory dwelling units that have been built without benefit of a permit, ensuring that those are only demolished if there's truly a risk to health and safety. So those are the fair housing programs, and those are the programs overall. I'll note just in general that a number of them to meet RENA, we currently are not anticipating a need for any categorical rezoning, but if that presents itself at any point, if HCD says, hey, these sites aren't going to work, that's one that we might have to revisit at a later point for rezoning. But given the availability of land in Escalon, as it's been identified, we don't foresee that as a need at this point. In addition, program needs to meet RENA may exist for large sites in the inclusion of any parcel that is over 10 acres. So that church site that was included is about 14 acres, so we'll need to include a large sites program if it's larger than 10 acres, given HCD's guidance that affordable housing sites are generally built out at between a half an acre and 10 acres. We can also just include 10 acres of that site, but it'll mean that we'll have to identify sites elsewhere. So just a heads up that that may be in the programs as well. As Mari Sella mentioned, Senate Bill Four, the one that allows development of affordable housing on religious land that's owned by religious-based institutions, is one that will likely be included to support the use of church sites, should that be the direction that commission and council goes forward with. In addition, no net loss, that's making sure that, essentially making sure that the city does not dip below its RENA in terms of the amount of adequate viable sites that it has within its inventory over the eight-year period. So that's one that's to meet RENA, really looking at it every year when the development and community services department prepares the annual planning report by every April 1st, to do an inventory, do a stock of sites, and make sure that, for example, sites haven't developed as a completely different use, that they haven't developed at different affordability levels, different densities, that change the site's math as it is put forth to fulfill the RENA. So that's an overview of some of the programs to meet the RENA, and next, we'll go into some of the next steps in the process. We're really moving full steam ahead here. We just went into under contract about three months ago and just saw you all for the last time about a month ago, so we really are doing everything that we can to make sure that we're fulfilling these deadlines to the best of our ability, that there's a limited window that the city will be subject to some of the negative side effects of not having a compliant and certified housing element. So really moving ahead, next, following this, will be a 30-day public review draft, along with a community workshop to really walk through exactly what's in that document when it's made publicly available in the next month or so. After that 30-day public review period, under state law, there's a required 10-business-day incorporation period when, before the initial draft can be submitted to HCD for their review. So really, looking at the timeframe, this is going to be transmitted to HCD late December, early January. So that's when that initial draft is going to be sent to HCD, and they have 90 days to review. They will not take less time than that, unfortunately, as many times as we can ask them and as nicely as we do. They take the full 90 days and do their really thorough review of them. So that's when, really, the first comments are going to come from HCD, and that's the next time that it'll come back to the plan and commission and council. Under state law, the commission and council cannot review informally a draft of the housing element unless it's for adoption. So we'll be coming back to you when it's time to adopt it. It can change at that point, but really, that's when it goes to plan and commission and city council adoption, is after it goes out for public review and that initial draft. So we're looking at spring there for adoption. After it's adopted by the commission and the council, then it goes to HCD for another 60 days, and fingers crossed, that's when they give it their sort of approval and the city is in compliance and has a certified housing element. We include subsequent HCD reviews on there as well, because every time they come back with a letter, even if there's just one item, they might have, you know, 15 items the first time around, even if there's just one item, they still have to submit it for 60 days. That's when it starts to get to a point where we can ask them, hey, is this really going to take you the full 60 days? And sometimes it takes them a little bit less than that, but just so the commission and council are fully aware, every time we resubmit it, it's another 60 days. So that's where this process can get pretty lengthy, but we are hopeful that with the approach that we're taking and with the timeline that we're on, that we'll be able to get an adopted and certified housing element relatively early in 2024. So those are the next steps. Again, any questions from members of the public can be directed to housingelement@cityofescalon.org. And with that, we'll open it up to the commission and council for discussion. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions?
I have a question. Is this PowerPoint going to be available to the public?
Make it available.
And when would that be? Before the workshop, give people and community time to look at it?
Yeah, we can load it on. It does, are posted in the next couple of days.
Are we online right now? Are there any questions from anyone else or from the public?
So you mentioned one of the programs is regarding displacement. And over the last few years, at a local mobile home park, we've had some residents that have been displaced. So what takes precedent, HCD law regarding mobile home parks or the city's housing element regarding these programs to avoid displacement?
Thank you for the question. So there's a number of different actions that can go into the anti-displacement actions program. Given that mobile homes are often a part of that, and as you understand, HCD has jurisdiction over mobile homes, however, there are additional actions beyond state law that the city can take to better protect mobile home residents. Some jurisdictions have considered a mobile home rent stabilization ordinance to help keep space rents lower, to prevent displacement of mobile home residents. There's Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, Community Opportunity to Purchase Act, that give mobile home park residents first opportunity to purchase in the event that there's a sale. So there's a number of actions that can be taken, really depending on the appetite of the commission and council.
Which takes precedent, the housing element or current state laws regarding, or HCD laws regarding mobile home parks? Because if there's a conflict between the two, which governs, the housing element or HCD regulations?
Certainly. So it would be a supplemental action. Everything that we would do would have to really abide with state law and would be something that would be above and beyond the state's regulation of mobile home parks.
Thank you.
Do we have anything online? Dave, what would you like, excuse me, what would you like to do?
Actually, I have one more question. I was trying to formulate the question properly. We'll see if we can muddle through this real quick. So with the thought that we need to hit certain buckets for certain economic areas in town and whatnot, how is the housing element going to drive a developer who comes in and realizes, well, I bought this 10 acres and I want to build these houses for X amount of dollars to make the most profit? At what point in time do we have to come in and tell them, well, we've already had too many of those? We can't allow you to build that in this perfectly zoned property for those houses? And we have to tell them you can only build affordable or single-room houses or whatever, you know, ADUs and stuff? Where does that stick come from the housing element? Because most developers are not going to be interested in coming in just to make, you know, cover costs.
Right.
They're looking for profit. And in this town, generally speaking, they're building expensive homes, from what I've seen.
Yeah, absolutely. That's certainly a consideration with no net loss and making sure that, particularly as the sites that are identified for affordable housing are developed, you know, if a number of them are developed as single-family residences, and that is going to be a concern and a consideration, which is why that mechanism is put in, that, you know, if everything's developing as something else, it triggers an action mid-cycle that the city has to look and say, okay, where else can we look for sites? Generally, there aren't, you know, minimum densities in certain instances, which are pretty robust in terms of the city's policies. Would preclude that from happening on too many of the sites, but it is certainly a possibility, especially for certain projects that would be able to meet those minimum densities. So it's certainly a consideration. There's a limited ability in terms of some certain streamlining measures, what developers would be able to do in terms of their rights and what they would be able to do in terms of the zoning, if it's compatible. So it would really be more of a citywide strategy to make sure that if those numbers are really dipping, that there's this alternative course of action there. Generally, I would say just sort of, given the amount of available land in Escalon and the city's RENA, that shouldn't be a concern over the course of the planning period.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor, do you want to adjourn this?
I guess, should we close the workshop at this point, then? There's no other comments or concerns? Audience? No burning questions, Mr. Haskins?
Not yet.
All right, then I'll call officially on Dave, on Mr. Mayor's behalf here, Dave.
I'll adjourn.
I know you planned it.
Hi, Mark, how are you?
Okay, Mark.
Great timing.